To order. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.23711, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, or employees of any body, adjustment to the Appeals Board, CPMT, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission. Under 3, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose of the disposition of the publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position of the negotiating strategy of the public body. One, former Blacksburg Middle School, former Blacksburg High School, former Charlesville Elementary School, former MCS, MCPS Central Offices, Mid-County, former AEP property, Eastman request from American Electric Power County Park Merrimack and Huckleberry Trail. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to go into closed meeting with a clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're in closed meeting. Can we go out of work session?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to go out of work session with a clerk, please call roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2313711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meetings in which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Need a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second regarding the certification of closed meeting with a clerk, please call roll.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item on our agenda, well, the next two items, implication and I pledge allegiance. My implication is where we observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand, and once we reflect in a moment of silence, will be led in the pledge by County Administrator Mr. Craig Meadows.
Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda would be addendum.
Mr. Chair, we have some items that we're going to discuss in work session, so if it's all right with the Board, I'd like to move the addendum to after the work session, because there might be something that comes out of work session that they might want to add.
Does it take a vote?
I think just consensus.
Consensus? Everybody good with it?
Okay.
Everybody's good?
Thank you.
So, the next item would be public hearings.
Mr. Chair, our first public hearing this evening, or our only public hearing this evening, is the VDOT Secondary Six-Year Road Improvement Plan. This is a public hearing that we have each year to hear from the community about concerns regarding the six-year road plan and projects in Montgomery County. And I believe, I can't, there you are.
Yeah.
I thought David was in here, there's a big monitor between me and David. David Clark's here from VDOT, and David, I'll recognize you for any comments, and then...
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'll start off and make a few comments, and we'll open it up to the public. This is the annual public hearing for secondary six-year road improvements. Montgomery County gets an allocation of VDOT construction funds every year. A little bit, I'll talk a little bit more about the amount of that funding is going up a little bit more due to the new transportation bill or what it has been in years past. However, this is being held in accordance with the Code of Virginia mandating that VDOT and the county hold a public hearing each year for the purpose of hearing citizens' comments on how this construction money is to be spent. This is for the budget year of 2014-15 and for the six-year plan that goes through July 2020. And again, this is a hearing for the secondary road system, these are roads numbered 600 and above. There's a separate public hearing for the district, Salem District, 12th County area, for primary and interstate routes, for roads like Route 11, Route 460, Route 8, 114. That would be next week at Northside High School in Roanoke. The transportation funding bill passed by the General Assembly last year did change some of the funding that counties are getting for their secondary funds. Still, most of them are for unpaid roads. It used to be that, as of last year, last General Assembly, it was four roads, a lot of them with a traffic count of 200 and above was most of it. That was repeatedly stricken from that section of the code in this just recent one. It's back to the old 50 and above. So, some of the roads, it won't affect Montgomery County, because I think most of the roads we were going to add were of that traffic count anyway. And again, the bill provides most of that money in the last three years of the plan anyway. You're going to average about a little over $500,000 per year over the next six years, a little less in this upcoming 14, 15 year, but then it increases, and then towards the last year of the plan, you're getting up to a little over $500,000. That's still quite a bit less than the, you're getting, I think, close to $2 million a year at one point. Right now, we're working on a project this coming summer. This is just some of your six-year plan money at work right now, is Mount Pleasant Road has been awarded to a contractor, they should be starting pretty soon. It's not due to finish until probably next spring. They might get finished before this construction season if they can.
Which one?
Well, it's only one, and that's advertised, it's the one that'll take it to Split Rail.
Down the other way, you've got, that's moving off, right now, from off.
That's, there's a revenue sharing project, yeah, we haven't gotten through all the needed things, so that's a, that's a separate type of project, that's not using your secondary construction money. That's a revenue sharing project. Right now, we're working on another revenue sharing project to pay a small section of Blue Springs Road, so that'll come after that. Right now, we've got the contract wet, and they should be done, yeah, sometime, they might be, if things go well, they might be able to get the hard service on it this construction season. If not, the contract allows for them to go through May next year. So, I'll read what I've presented as a draft plan. It's basically the same plan as last year's with the deletion of 621 Craig's Creek Road, which we completed. So, right now, the draft plan, what will happen is we'll do, I'll give a draft plan, we'll take comments, and then the Board can, based on this plan, either add or delete roads from that plan. I can tell you right now, with just a half a million dollars a year, and roads like Yellow Sulfur Road on it, City Church Road on it, you're not going to have any room to add roads to the current plan, the funding, unless you delete one. You can drop one, but you can't, there's not enough money just to keep adding more roads. So, right now, we've got priority number one, Mount Pleasant Road, that's the part that's under construction, that'll take us from the bridge to Split Rail Road. Priority two is Sydney Church Road, started some of the preliminary engineering, some of the, looking at the environmental needs and the regulations required for it, and I can tell you right now that there are some complicated environmental factors in there. Priority number three is Piney Woods Road, we're getting close to completion of design on that. Priority four is the bridge there, Mount Pleasant Road, we're starting the unpaid road project. That's a separate project, I put it in the plan just because it's a secondary road, but it's not using any of your secondary construction funds, it's being funded completely by our Bridge Office. Priority five was added last year, the Yellow Sulfur Road, that's been planned for a long time, had been taken out when we lost all of our funding for secondary roads, but we got it back. That was a road that has over 200 vehicles a day, it's your only one that has over 200 vehicles a day. So, that was added last year, and Mount Pleasant Road, the rest of the way, after the revenue sharing project, will do this project that will hard service it from Split Rail up to where the hard service ends if you come down the road. And then I have on there just various countywide items, a little bit of money in things like traffic services, right-of-way acquisition, right-of-way research, guardrail signs, and things like that. Just, those things, any kind of new guardrail has to be charged to construction money, and that's, that's that various countywide thing. So, there's the draft plan, like I said, it's not nearly the plan we've had years past, where we had up to 20 roads in the plan, but again, we're only getting about a half a million dollars a year, so. Any other questions from the Board right now? We can open up to public comment, I'll also be here after that to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, David. We are opening the public hearing on the six-year highway plan, improvement plan, for any public comment at this time.
And you do have one.
Okay, and I think on the list I have Mr. Jason Janelle. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Jason Janelle, 415 National Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia, with Collision Plus Incorporated. Coming with a request for an ad, sort of dimming my hopes here, Mr. Clark, so it wasn't even removable, but basically, I've got a petition here to donate the right-of-way to have a really short section of our road maintained. I'm not sure of the history of National Drive, I think it was orphaned when the bypass came through, for those of you who aren't familiar with where National Drive is, at the intersection of Business 460 and Janelle Road, there's another road there that goes down beside Duncan Ford, that's National. It used to cross the bypass and come out over, I think, where Cinnabar Road is now, but like I said, the bypass came through, I think, and segmented it, and from just talking with folks that's been around a little longer than me, that once that happened, sort of got forgot about. There's not any residents on the road, it's businesses, there's five businesses that have a post office or mailing address of National Drive, and during the wintertime, we don't receive any help on plowing, there's no road maintenance. My company personally, in the last five years, have put over $20,000 into the repair and maintenance of the road, and it's just, it's getting difficult to have that on our operating sheet. So, that's, that's one angle that I wanted to address you guys with, the other is a safety concern. If you've ever been down National, it's pretty easy to come down, but when you go back up, it's a very awkward intersection, the way it comes into Janelle and Business 460. Customers aren't sure if they have to go up onto Janelle to trigger the light, to turn the light green for them, or they'll sit there, and there's no sensor there, so unfortunately, I've had customers sit for five, 10 minutes at a time and not realize that the light's never going to change for them. I talked with some folks that said that at one point in time, there was a plan to move that intersection down Janelle as far as it could, next to the Duncan Ford property, to ease that confusion and the safety, because it's very difficult to see when someone's turning, coming from the Christiansburg side onto Janelle. It's almost a blind, and I've had some folks almost have an accident there. So, that's sort of my nutshell case of why I would like to see that on the addition, and I do have this petition that I think I need to turn into seminar. I brought maps and stuff, but I think after reading, you guys need to do a study, site study and stuff, is that right?
We can, we'll follow up with VDOT on...
Did you guys need anything else from me about setting up to get the ball rolling, maybe?
We're good.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Board?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Karen Witt, I live at 2292 Elliot Creek Road, and tonight I came up to also put a little ad in the back there for the six-year road improvement. Obviously, a half a million doesn't go very far, however, I will put my two cents in. So, tonight, I would like to request the much-needed improvements to the gravel roads leading into and connecting our community, those roads of Craig's Mountain, Elliot Creek, Sugar Grove, Bow Hill, and Proclamation. I think some of y'all have been down Craig's Mountain and part of Elliot Creek, so you know how kind of steep and needs improvement. Those improvements include necessary widening and guardrails for safety purposes, replacing existing culverts with larger ones to help prevent obstruction, and to have proper drainage to eliminate washboard surfaces, and some road signs, those that says maybe speed limit, because right now, there's no speed limit signs on there, and you can go 55 miles an hour, and people will do that. Road ends, caution, et cetera. Talked to Chris Price at VDOT a couple weeks ago, he picked up some pamphlets, especially the one is how do I get my road paved and under it? Sounds like it's, we do have three options in here, the rural rustic road program, the paving place program, and let's get it paved. I prefer that option, let's get it paved, continuing the pavement from Craig's Mountain Road down as far as the money will go, especially the first steep hill, it's about 400 meters, and that would be a great improvement if we could do that. VDOT did come down recently and grade it, I do appreciate it, it's still semi-smooth even after all the rain, so I do appreciate they come down after our request, but tonight I was just wondering if we could also be added in the secondary six-year improvement plan if there's any money left over after Yellow Sulfur Road. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I will also mention attached to your packet, there's two letters there, there's one from Mr. Robert Goldstein and one from Lynn Neistrom, to make you aware of their requests, so.
Last one, that was 674, uh, six, right, stated about 674, it was 1613 Bow Hill Road, that Neistrom sent out.
Yeah, so pretty much, yeah, okay. Well, seeing no one else, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move off from this point to public address. If it's anyone who wants to address the Board on any county business, do so at this time. Seeing no one coming forward, we will, I will close the public address session. Next item is consent agenda. Any discussion? Have a motion and a second, with a clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is to go into work session, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following. On-campus voting precinct, Virginia Tech, Commissioner revenue probation of personal property taxes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to go into work session, with a clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is to go into work session, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following. On-campus voting precinct, Virginia Tech, Commissioner revenue probation of personal property taxes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to go into work session, with a clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Todd?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're now in work session.
Mr. Chair, the first item is the on-campus voting precinct of Virginia Tech. As you're aware, we've had quite a bit of discussion with folks at Virginia Tech and some of the adjoining properties, trying to identify opportunities to meet what the Student Government Association has been trying to do there with voting precincts, and at this point, Brent, I'm going to recognize you, Brent Ashley, who is the, I guess you're now the past president, aren't you?
Retired.
Retired president of the Student Government Association. Brent has been a tireless leader in working on this issue, he's made some trips to Richmond, trying to get some issues resolved, had quite a bit of conversation with me and with Marty, and also with Supervisor Gabriel, trying to find a win-win solution. As I shared with several of you, Dr. Wilson was going to be here as well, but he's had something come up that's not allowed him to be here this evening, so Brent's going to run through the presentation, and then me, Marty, or Brent will be glad to try to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the unexpected change, Dr. Wilson's daughter unfortunately had an accident about an hour ago, so she can't join us. I just want to, we put together a presentation to show some background, this history of this issue, and really, our progress over the last, this past year, this real discussion. My own student body president, this has been issues come up for a number of years. There's just been complaints with voting for students, in just the airport vicinity and others, I mean, we have records going back to at least the last four years, and we'll review here in a minute. And so, we started looking at, you know, what constitutes redistricting, and we found out it didn't need a census, and we found, you know, if it was to preserve community interest and to improve voter convenience, then there was a need, and then we had the ideas of, okay, let's create two precincts, so that we can have this population quality. Really tackling a couple different issues here. So, just going through this presentation, and then we'll get to the end here, so, thank you. So, starting back in 2011, there are some talks about an on-campus polling location. VT committed to work with the county to establish it on campus, but they could not find one at that time, or no real solution was, they really were not determined, so then we decided on the airport. In November 2012, presidential election voter turnout was more than doubled from 2011, so then we received more complaints, insufficient parking, long lines, difficulty securing lines of pole closing, and so on. Last spring, we had electoral board requesting consideration for Virginia Tech for their on-campus location. We responded, or Virginia Tech rather, accessibility and parking issues remained, there were no other on-campus locations to be considered at the time, but they did, Virginia Tech still wants a on-campus, it's easier to say student-only precinct, so I recognize that in this presentation, but it's really an on-campus residence precinct. So, that includes our staff faculty who may serve as advisors on special purpose housing, the president's home, staff workers for our farms, so on. I think most everyone here has seen that proposed E3 and F3. So, then we get into this year, and this is when I got involved directly. We started talking with Kara Williams and a number of others in the beginning of the year about what this would look like, and this is where we really learned our options, and obviously, we've been part of those talks the past year. Everyone agreed that we would want an on-campus, an on-campus resident-only precinct, and we all came together and really started tackling this issue. 2014, it was decided that we have, we considered a couple different rooms in Squire Student Center, the all-in Squire Student Center, but the, it came down to Commonwealth Ballroom. And I will show you real quick, this was a proposal, we had a meeting on February 26 to really start hammering things out, and this was an example provided by, I believe, the County Registtor's Office, and it wasn't from Virginia Tech. And as you can see, this, you know, quote-unquote, established a voter entrance on one side of the voting precinct and has a restricted area, which we learned is not exactly, we cannot do that, and we recognize that, but with that information, just keep that in mind for when we get to it a little later. We obviously, we got the agreement from the counties, okay, we have Squires, we have Commonwealth Ballroom, and we sent back, Virginia Tech sent back a letter agreeing to the accommodation, but the recommendation was some slight modifications, and that was with the diagram just all, we had, it obviously portrayed the alumni mall side as voter entrance with these areas for everything to take place. With that in mind, we thought, okay, we don't want our alumni mall side, if we can in fact do that, we would like to have on College Avenue side. And as you can see, this compares our modifications to the request, and there's really, really not any big differences here, except for rather than the alumni mall side, just the College Avenue side. So, obviously, instead of being on the left side of this building, it would be on the upper, like, right side. Excuse me.
Sorry, Brent, can I just pause? I just want to be clear that this was provided to you by the registrar, not by the county Board of Supervisors or by the...
We were, it's February 26, it was a meeting, I believe, with Mr. Meadows, Mr. Mann, myself, Dr. Wilson, Vice President Jellifer Smith, Student Government Association, Cabinet AU, who's Director of the Planning Office, and Randy Wood, County Registrar, and this was not, this did not come from Virginia Tech, and I believe it came out of the registrar's office.
It did, after that meeting, there was a discussion about the registrar and his staff taking a look at what possibilities there were, so the consensus was for the registrar's office to come out and look, and that's where some of these suggestions came from.
Right, and I just, again, just preface this whole presentation, it seemed like there was a number of messages and communications going around other places, we really just want to get back, like, on the record and really clear it all up, so we can move forward from here. So, here's the layout of Squire's Student Center. As you can see, the alumni mall entrance is what was unofficially designated as the voting precinct entrance, and again, under that understanding, we wanted to move it to the College Avenue side. Both have about an equal use, this is our GIS, so you can see the average traffic on Tuesdays, so like, election days, and you'll see we have more demographics for, you know, around 3:30 in the afternoon, as this presentation goes on, but this just shows how heavily used each entrance is. As you can see in the alumni mall entrance side, there's really no space, and that was one of our concerns actually for being considered towards party poll workers, was there just, there wasn't any space, and you'll see in a couple more diagrams how cluttered it would be. We saw this side as a heavily used entrance, as a very much open space, and I mean, it was really, it was all good natured, if you will. This again, it shows an ugly perspective of how much open space there is. On the College Avenue side, Squire's parking lot, what you see here on the right, is where the 20 reserved spaces would be for our, the county's people that worked the elections. This shows the entrances, well, from the alumni mall, I'm sorry, from the College Avenue side, you walk in, you can either go to the right and use your elevator to go to second story, or use the stairs, and then it enters Commonwealth Ballroom over to the left. Inside there is where both potential precincts could have been housed, designed by the County Registrar's office. Both lines would have fit inside there, so inside the large ballroom, seemed like a pretty good solution for our, you know, issue of past several years of trying to find a location. This just shows another, another diagram of really showing how much space is left over, and you can see here, it shows the traffic going in and out, and how cluttered it would get, really completing egress and ingress of that alumni mall side. It just depicts exactly what it said. And then, obviously, again, just showing, this is where Virginia Tech was coming from, is ease of ingress and egress to the building, ease of area for party poll workers to be able to use, and so on. This is a diagram that shows what the actual traffic would look like. Around 3:30 in the afternoon, we have about 1,100 students going, pretty much out, but I think it's about 700 going out, 740, and then another 300 or so going in. As you can see, there's color codes for class change points, for political points, so our party poll workers, bustling points, and so on, seeing how much space is actually there, just that, up to the right, we have bike racks, which you can't really see right now from this picture, it goes on the dots, and then trees. So, really what you have is, you have this little thin sidewalk where you have the road, so really, this is all about what is easiest for everybody. This just shows, sorry.
Sorry, I was asking, if I'm remembering correctly, 315, between 315 and 3:30 on Tuesday, that's the period between classes, correct?
Yes.
So, that would be the most busy time?
Right, and it's actually, I think, close to peak time for voting, if I'm not mistaken. This again, is just another way, the heat map, showing the same diagram, and how congested and how much space. and how much space it really wouldn't, you know, with a 40-foot buffer absolutely required by law, there's, there's not really a chance, there really isn't. So, I mean, this was, the original intent was not to be antagonistic, it was what would work for all. So what our conclusion would be, we had some diagrams that the registrar's office worked with a senior design team of Virginia Tech engineering, and they found a 45% improvement in mean time to vote, 35% improvement in maximum time to vote, an 18% increase in percent of voters who voted in under an hour, if these two precincts, both precincts, were held house in Squire Student Center, specifically in Commonwealth Ballroom. So obviously, with everything that came up here recently, Virginia Tech, we recognize that even though the original diagram I showed earlier from the County Registor's Office that depicted a restricted area for party poll workers is in fact not, does not abide with the state code, we recognize that, we do not want to go against the state code. So I know Virginia Tech is more than, if it solves the, if it is a solution, and if we can keep F3 and E3, that was something that was specifically stated today by Virginia Tech administration. We would like to offer the board, the Squire Student Center, again, no mention of any restricted area, but Virginia Tech does deserve the right and intends to close the entrance in the online mall side, that is to block egress. They would be posted a few days, at least two days in advance before elections, that students know this entrance will be closed on Election Day and using other entrances on the side, mainly that one main entrance on College Avenue, and then it would be enforced throughout the day. If there's any questions.
But you could still exit the building if there was an emergency.
Yes, we cannot, we cannot block any egress. We can just block.
Ingress.
Fire code, sorry.
Questions?
I appreciate, and I know Sherwood is not here, but one of my concerns was the abilities to be able to access voters that were going to be coming from the upper quad. I appreciate Tech going to say that they're going to close the entrances at this point in time. I think then voters aren't coming in, that's when you're more interested in being able to handle the information. For many times, especially for local elections, it'll be the only time that they may have contact with a voter potentially, especially national, people tend to stay more informed, but local. I think this will address that issue, and obviously avoid any potential litigation that the county may have been involved in. And so by, by closing that main entrance, I think that resolves the concerns I had regarding that. Has the, as far as the registrar is concerned, does this, have they, does this resolve what their concerns were?
They've been involved in some of the discussions. My suggestion is if the board's ready to move forward, and I'm sort of answering it with this, we have to have a public hearing to talk about the precinct changes and whatnot. I'm sure that the registrar will come and make any comments regarding their concerns. I know that Brent and the SGA folks and the VT administration have worked real closely with the registrar's office to try to address all the issues as much as possible, so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, I appreciate it. Just going back, like, this is actually one of our main inspirations for, like, closing that entrance for the day. Because if we, even if you had, you know, 20 particle workers, they'd just be overlooked. You see 1,100 students going in and out, how congested that is, with all that space on the other side. It is my understanding that if the board votes out a public hearing today, Virginia Tech will issue a, issue a letter, because this right now is an agreement between the board solely and Virginia Tech for providing the building.
Right.
And we will mention that we intend to close the entrance on the day of elec, oh, Election Day. And then it goes to the registrar to determine how to use the building, which we already have that work done with the Reagan's diagrams, I'm sorry, County Registor's Office's diagram.
So if we vote to have a public hearing, then we're going to get a letter from Tech saying we're going to close that entrance on the Election Day?
If you guys agree that this will solve our issues, and we can move forward, we can, we'll get a letter this week.
All right.
That's good.
And the other issues, whether the board of elections, or that ever came up before elections, the registrar's office, one, that'll be handled when it comes, that's no problem. I know the language pilot was used in that previous letter, but it wasn't meant for to be a pilot, it was just meant to allow flexibility. One of our discussions for one of the other rooms was, from the County Registor's Office, was, you know, we could come back and evaluate and see if we need to move in two years for presidential election. And that was just to allow flexibility for that to happen, but none of that language would be included, none of that was meant to be, to, none of that was meant to obviously keep this from happening in future years.
And just to make it clear, the Squire's building will be the polling location, so it can be in any room in that building, so there's flexibility there to change it.
We don't have that, we don't have the authority to say what room in a certain building a polling location is doing.
No, I mean, I would recommend no, because you would want, you want the building itself to be the polling location. And that's the location, and then within the building, there'll be, it's like at high school or middle school. Our middle schools are the polling location, but you're only voting in, it's a gym or something like that, so it, where it's directed is, is the main thing that's handled by the registrar, but you guys set the building as the polling location.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, again, I just want to, I really want to commend Brent for the work he's done. He's got, you got three finals this week?
Two more finals.
Two more finals. He's, he's, he's neck deep in it right now, but he has been very actively involved and taken a lot of his own personal time to keep this moving forward, and great job, Brent.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will just say that when we come out of work session, we do have a resolution prepared if you'd like to consider it as an addendum this evening. Call for a public hearing, so.
Okay. Our next item is the Commissioner of Revenue, Proration of Personal Property Taxes update. Hi Helen, I'm glad you could come and be with us.
Good evening. I have worked really hard on this. I'm going to say that you get what you pay for, okay? And I talked to a really nice commissioner in Culpeper, and she warned me that what I'm about to undertake or may undertake, I need help to do this. I said, well, I have people who think that it's just a key punch job, and she said, no, it's not just a key punch job. When you do proration, everything comes in from DMV, but we have to know where it came from, which means that vehicle has to be individually looked up. We have to know where it's going, if it's leaving. And we have to keep up with this information, because if it's coming into Montgomery County from a prorating county, we can pick it up and bill it. If it's coming into Montgomery County from a non-prorating county, we cannot pick it up and bill it if we're prorating, okay? So if it's coming from Run Oak into Montgomery County prorating, I can pick it up for part of the year. But if it's coming from Radford to Montgomery County for part of the year, I cannot pick it up. And this is records that have to be kept up with. We have 12 wonderful people in the commissioner's office, and they are worked. Everybody has picked up more work since they came, since we lost five people. If we were at the point where we had five people, we would have no problem doing this, no problem. All I'm asking is that you be mindful that it's not just a key punch job, okay? On that, on that, I did not make a PowerPoint, I did not make you all copies, because I have this printout that Terry Yow from Culpeper sent me. She compared, and I will email it to all of you all, she compared 2012 regular book to 2013 non-prorating book. They went to proration on January 1st, 2013. Then she compared 2012 book to 2013 proration book. And then she compared 2013 non-proration to 2013 proration. So she covered all of her bases. Well, it's a really nice printout, and she did, she broke it down by vehicle kinds, motorcycles, campers, passenger carriers. I mean, it's really, really a good, so I thought, there's bound to be something wrong with this. And I asked Mark Maruder to come downstairs and look at it for me. Well, Mark seems to think that she's got too many cars in her coming into her proration year. But Jesse has spent the day today prorating 2009, 10, 11, and 12 for Montgomery County based on the amounts that we picked up for the next year, okay? So the amounts are a little bit off. It's less than what it would have been had we picked them up in the year 2009, okay? Are you following me? We had 9,794 vehicles that were new to the county. A prorated amount for those vehicles is $1,153,868.9. Now, another thing we did not take into consideration during this is PPTRA, because we don't know what it would be in a given year, okay? I have 2009, 2010, 2011, and in 2012, it was $1.2 million. Still yet, PPTRA is not taken into consideration. The number of vehicles remain about the same. In 2011, there were 10,163, but in 2012, there was only 9,564, okay? And, and that kind of reflected in the book that I gave you all. There are 59 prorating counties. Another thing that Terry Yow told me was that if, used to people thought that proration was just a pot of gold, but the more people that do it, the less you have. Where they got most of their money was, a car would move out to a non-prorating locality. That locality couldn't pick it up, so they get to keep it. The prorating county gets to keep it, okay? If, if a car from Montgomery County moved to Radford, I can't do anything about it. I'm prorating. I can't do anything about it. I keep that car for all year, because they only pick up on January 1st, okay? If it moves to Run Oak, I lose that car, because they prorate from the point of entry if I'm a, if I'm a prorating county, okay? Okay? And then the next thing I have is in 2013, on the 2014 books, we have 1,230 vehicles. And I don't have value on that, because we haven't sent them off to NADA, but there are 1,230 vehicles, which is a lot more than the 9,500 we had last year, okay? There's a lot of work that has to go into this. Our MUNIS system, the program is ready, all you have to do is flip a button, they say, and it'll do proration for us. Run Oak County has offered very sweetly to help us out in any way they can, but when we call Run Oak County, their IT department does a lot of things. So we're going to have to have a little training in how to pull, how to pull reports and things like that. And today I got the ball rolling on that, because even if we don't go to proration, my people need to know how the program works, how, how a book should really look. As far as the DMV, it's not going to cost us anything. The only big cost that we would have would be NADA, and that's because we would go more than one time to NADA. We would send a big shipment in July, and then every couple of weeks after that for the supplemental books, okay? What else am I not telling you? Oh, last year, I had requested money for a state program, but when we started talking about proration, I asked if we could use that money for PSDs to be automatically downloaded from CLT into MUNIS, and as addresses go in, it picks up the PSD and marks the vehicle as to where it is. And somewhere along the line, the money got lost. So I would have to ask for you to, to do that again. And I'm sure MUNIS has raised their rates by now, but that program is out there, they did develop it, it was $5,500 then, okay? So you all ask me the questions that you have, and if I don't have an answer, I'll find out, okay?
Okay. Questions, for what members? Mr. Creed?
What happens prorating or non-prorating, if you buy, if you have a car and you buy one to replace that car, do you get charged on both of them for the year? Even if you kept it and wanted to sell it?
If you keep, if you keep it, if you don't trade it in, you're taxed for it until the point of sale, okay? Like, if you bought a new car in January, I would pick that car up and bill you for, for all year. If you already had a car and you sold it in March, I'm just going to bill you for January, February, and March. And there's certain dates in there, it's like the 15th and 16th, that either you pay for the whole month or you pay for the half month.
So is there a way of letting you know if somebody bought a car and turned around two months later and sold the car that they had originally, how do you know which way to go?
How would I know that? One thing, if, when they, when it's titled at the DMV, I will find that out. But I have also asked for a change to the code where you have 60 days within a change of address if you buy or sell a vehicle. Any change in your personal property record, that you have to notify the commissioner's office. And there are programs out there, and MUNIS, I think, has one that is being looked at, I've been told, that can give us that information. A lot of taxpayers will just email me and say, I sold your car. And they'll just, they'll give me the bare information, that you don't have to give me a lot. If you give me your, your name and your address, I can go in and find you.
So, so the general public is going to be notified and brought up to speed on what they have to do when you have a...
We'll have to do that, yes, we'll have to do that, because they don't, they won't just know that they have to do this. They won't just know. But we can, yeah, okay?
The NCA prorate works both ways. If, right now it works, whatever cars are in the county on January 1st, we tax. And they, and if they sold the car on January 2nd, they're paying the full freight, even if they sold it one day later, and only owned the car for one day. Now, if you prorate, then they're only going to get taxed for that one day, and they're not going to pay that full rate. But the same thing goes, if I go buy a new car on January 10th, I'm going to get billed for most of that year, except for 10 days. And remember, we don't bill until December, so we're catching up, so we're going to know, she's going to know a lot of what goes on.
Yes, so I would offer this to you, and that is that cars that are sold new are going to have a higher price tag, and the ones that sell in January, February, March are going to be carrying a bigger load, so you need to watch where that's at, because this other might not make sense once you find out where that's at.
Now, you're exactly right, and what she was talking about, new cars, the critical thing about new cars is... And what she was talking about, new cars, the critical thing about new cars is they're not coming in from another county that may be prorating or not prorating. What I mean by that is you're going to get the full amount, minus the amount of days less than January 1. So new constructions, new cars are going to want it.
Yeah, that might cost you more than a million dollars.
Is a million dollars value a tax?
It's tax dollars.
It's tax.
Yeah. But PPTRA hasn't been taken into account.
Right.
Which she means by that is, and Carol can probably explain this better than me, but if we're going to get more taxes, then our P... Remember that PP, whatever that acronym is.
TRA.
PPTRA.
What does that mean?
That number's not changing. States are not giving any more than the... Whatever the numbers is. And so our percentage will go down, right?
Okay.
The greater the value, the lower amount each individual taxpayer will receive because the state's relief amount is capped.
It's capped.
That's right.
Can you wait for that?
Relief amount?
Right.
Old taxes for a car?
Right.
How much the states will pay. Everything under 20 is supposed to be free. Well, it's not free anymore because they can't pay.
Like, right.
It never has been free, has it?
The car tax.
Hasn't been free for a while.
I mean, I've paid taxes pretty much all my life, and I ain't never got it free.
Well, the state offsets a percentage of that, but once the state capped out how much money they give us, the bigger the pie is, the smaller amount of relief that's subtracted from each individual taxpayer's bill.
So the state's going to divvy it up, no?
No, just the...
Of course, the amount.
What that means is being you pay more, and the state is going to pay less of our total value. They're going to still pay the same amount, but we're going to owe more.
The state said some time ago, "We're only going to give you this much money, and you're going to have to spread it further," is what happens.
It appears to me like we're chasing a buck at Lincoln.
The other thing she brought up, and I told our helper on this, is that she wants to... Right now, the code requires everyone to submit a property tax return on anything that we tax under the personal property statutes in Virginia that's billed on January 1. And there is a provision there that allows you or her, but you have to pass an ordinance to minimize some of the work that you would have to do and some of the work that citizens have to do where if you... And it only deals with motor vehicles, boats, or trailers. You don't have to do all three, but you would probably just do motor vehicles maybe.
Motor vehicles.
If you, let's say, you bought a car and you registered it in Montgomery County, Virginia in 2014, and you made your return, well, then you can rely on that return for as so long as there's no change in status. This change in status would be property, site is... Anything like your car gets totaled or something. And so you don't have to file another return. She can rely on the return you did in '14. It saves you from having to do another return, saves you from having to send out returns. But in order to do that, we'll have to pass an ordinance. And so I think she's looking for you guys to maybe give the okay to begin that process. It wouldn't be till next year.
But she needs extra people in her office.
Right. Didn't know.
Let me tell you one thing that Terry said, and if you stop and think about it, it's true. I only have 12 people, 13 county members, and I work just like they do. When one of them's out, I step right in, okay? So we're not the office that we used to be, okay? When the people who are doing the book, and what the book means is the tax tickets going across the hall, getting everything ready, those two people work solid on that book, okay? But they deserve vacation. And while they take vacation, I still have cars coming in. I still have DMV reports to work. And if they're gone a week, I'm behind another week. So that's my concern. That's my concern, plus the fact that we're just keeping our heads above water right now, and things are starting to pick up.
And this thing that you're talking about, doing the proration or whatever now, is going to cause you to need more people, correct?
Right.
So...
And I've asked for one.
The difference between when you start adding one and you start seeing that people are paying more taxes out of dealership or less taxes out of dealership, whichever ways it may be, but I think it's more taxes out of dealership, at least for the first six months, and then it might go back to where it levels off. But I don't know, you know, if there's a problem now with not having enough people for vacations and this type of thing. Once you add this other in there, it's going to happen different times of the month all year long rather than being able to throw it all in one time.
But when you throw it all in at one time, that's what you're doing, you're throwing it all in at one time, and you're not getting to go through it like you should be going through it, that's why we have so many abatements in the fall of the year is because we don't look at every record. If we do proration, we're going to have to, and that will be all those two people will do. I mean, it is totally up to you all. I just... There are things that proration solves. It causes problems. You have a good point. But it also solves a lot. When a car leaves Montgomery County in March and goes to Georgia, and they have to pay full tax down there, they get really upset when they don't get their bill until December, and it's for a full year, okay?
From down there, you're talking about?
No, from us. They pay down there, and then they get a bill from us. And when I get that phone call, they are upset.
Well, if they bought it down there, they'd...
No, no.
No, they just moved.
Moved there.
Moved there. And theirs is different than ours.
They have... It's an anteriorian tax, but it's based on the value of the car, but when they move there. Just...
We have a lot of folks coming in to this area.
Yeah, we have a lot. Thank you.
There's a lot of... Spice Temple, Blacksburg, I know.
Okay, Mary.
Matt.
Oh, Matt. I thought you said you had...
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. Could you give us a sense of kind of if you were to start, just hypothetically, start today, like, how long? What type of implementation? What would it take to implement this? I mean, you talked about needing more people. Okay, do you need them right away? What specifically would they be doing? How would you be starting this process? When would it be completed? All that kind of stuff.
When do you want me to go to proration? January 1st?
Sure.
Okay. If I went to proration January 1st, I would start as soon as I got the book across the hall this in August.
Okay. Okay. And then what would be involved in the implementation? Like, when would you need this new person? Do you think you would need them right away? Do you think that you would wait and see to see how busy things were? Is there other software that would immediately be needed? Like, again, like, how would...
When that book goes across the hall, that's for a good while in September. If the book goes across the hall September 1st, as soon as Mr. Shetland sends the tax tickets out, our phones ring off the books. And there are seven people in personal property. Two of them do nothing but business, personal property. The two that work on the book, they now wait on the people that they were making the book for, okay? And then it'll slow down a little bit, and they can work on that book for proration for a little bit. But along about the middle of November, it picks back up, and it doesn't let up until So those people are being taken away from that job, and you can't prorate and not have them doing their job. So that person that I'm asking for will be specifically for proration, working on that book all the time.
Would that person need to be... So that person would need to be working on proration until, for forever?
Forever.
This isn't a set? Okay. And what type of position would this be? I mean, like, what?
It could be entry level.
It could be an entry level position? Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to know, my whole reason for ever being interested in this was it going to bring more money into the county that could be used. So I guess my question is, is it financially feasible as a plus in the county coffers to do this or not? I mean, that's what it boils down to for me. Like, if it was going to bring in excess money and you had to have one person, is the money going to cover that one person and still be bringing in more money? Like, does anyone have an answer to that? I don't have an answer to that. Like, I want to know.
I don't think we're going to actually know what it's going to do for Montgomery County until we do it.
What about these other...
But I do think that we will get at least $300,000 out of it. Looking at this, we're going to get more, but there are too many barriers in this. Too many.
Based upon... Sorry, Ellen, if I could. Based upon the experience of talking with this person, Culpeper and then other people, are you saying...
She got...
I think what Mary's asking is, are you saying this is a net positive generally?
She said that she netted $1.1 million.
In Culpeper County?
Now, Mark chooses to differ. He doesn't agree with that, and I don't, you know. But I asked Palatine, who also went to proration, they have 28,000 people in their county, and they netted 300,000. Terry told me yesterday on the phone that commissioners had said in the past that you could look for 10% to 15%, and she said, "That's not true. That's not true." And that you would be best to look for from 2% to 4% increase.
Increase. Okay. But in Culpeper County, which has 48,000 people or so, which is about, which is half what we have, they netted... She thinks she netted one point. Okay.
Yeah. That's what she's put on her piece of paper.
One thing that I might add, Culpeper doesn't have near the amount of new car dealers that we have, which is going to swing a big pendulum.
Any other questions? I have, I guess, two comments for basic clarification for our viewers that's out there in TV land. One, I know in the examples...
I was trying not to think of that.
Yeah, in the examples that you give, you talked about like 2011. You give some examples from another place, but I want people at home to understand that if we implement it, we're not going to go back to '09.
No.
Because they'll be talking like at the country store down there, "Well, Montgomery County is getting ready to go back and get us from '09 on taxes." So to make sure that they understand that.
We did that just to see if we could figure out where we would be, where we would be.
Yeah. Any other question or comment, just like if a person is here and they, upon graduation, they buy this new car, it's licensed in Virginia, they accept the job in Georgia, and that becomes a residence. What can they expect from Montgomery County if they bought it right here and a month later?
If they bought it here, we're going to put it on our books until they register it in Georgia. And once they prove to me that it was registered in Georgia, I'm going to abate the assessment to the point that I can't.
So, I mean, they might be billed for a couple of months or two months, something like that. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that a person left here, they wouldn't be calling and cursing all of us that, "I was only up for two months, and they billed me for the whole year."
That's what I get all the time.
But that's not true for each state. Some states don't have that.
Some states don't have it.
Some states, that would not be true for them.
Right.
And if they don't have an anteriorian tax, then they don't get it correct.
Okay. Other? Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Appreciate that.
It wasn't bad at all.
Okay, any other motion or got to work session?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion to second. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Addendum? Yeah. Mr. Chair, I'd like to, given the discussion we had about the VT polling precinct, and since we have an ordinance pre-made that we had to take off the books before, I'd like to try to add that to new business, to schedule a public hearing on this proposed new precincts of E3 and F3.
And I have a follow-up to Ms. Brown. Should we be doing something about the ordinance that she's talking about, this other thing?
If there is consensus on the board, we can start the process, and we'll bring it back to schedule a public hearing at the next meeting.
That's one thumb up. Two thumbs. Three thumbs.
I'd like to know, I'd like to see something.
We're just talking about for a public hearing. No, this is for the Commissioner of Rattling.
We can come back.
You can come back and address it. Is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
I don't mind that. I'd just like to have some questions answered before.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're talking about non-proration.
Right. That, yeah, that she was talking about, that we needed to do.
We can bring it back for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Now, getting back to... Do you all, as a board, want to deal with this before we go into new business as the first item of new business or put it a little bit later on, new business?
We've got one person waiting.
Yeah.
He's got two exams, I think, still.
I say do it.
So I don't mind putting this up on the beginning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has an objection.
Any... Okay.
Do we need to vote to add it to the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I made a motion.
So I need to...
Second.
Have a motion to second to add this item to the agenda. The clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
I don't know, but I'll say... What do we vote on?
The resolution.
The resolution. Aye.
It's just to schedule a public hearing.
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, let me fire this thing back up for new business. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Subject A, First Amendment to the Real Estate and Sales Agreement, Former Prices-Fork Elementary School. And the resolution is authorizing approval of the First Amendment to the Former Prices-Fork Elementary Real Estate Purchase and Sales Agreement, extending the review period to 60 days. And I guess, well, an additional 60 days.
It just adds, in the contract, there was a provision if both the buyer and the purchaser and the seller agreed to extend an additional 60 days.
Just let the board know, this is not a bad thing. This is actually a good thing to be... One of the conditions for them to close were, they actually have a hundred...
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, let me fire this thing back up for new business.
Keep losing.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Subject A, First Amendment to the Real Estate and Sales Agreement, Former Prices Fork Elementary School, and the resolution is authorizing approval of the First Amendment to the Former Prices Fork Elementary Real Estate Purchase and Sales Agreement, extending the review period to 60 days. And I guess, well, an additional 60 days.
It just adds, in the contract, there was a provision if both the buyer and the purchaser and the seller agreed to extend an additional 60 days.
Just let the board know this, this is not a bad thing, this is actually a good thing. One of the conditions for them to close, or they actually have a time period to close on the deal, during that time period, two things they need to get done, so they will close. One is the historic district, which is proceeding, that change, adding the building, and I think the public hearing on that is next Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, 5 o'clock.
Yeah. So that'll get approved, so we wanted a little more time to make sure that was done. And then also the rezoning process of changing the property so it could be developed. We delayed it one month starting it in order to get everything done in a little better way, and so we're just buying some more time with that, so it's a, it's a good thing. It's moving forward.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Would the clerk please call the row?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject B, Creation of a Rhino Public Safety Facilities Needs Advisory Ad Hoc Committee. This is the last meeting, the resolution I talked about last week, and in your packet, you can see the various positions that's added, or personnel that's added in under it. It's a Fire and Rescue Facilities Needs Advisory Task Force, and establishing a working group. The task force, I guess, have no real authority but, other than to make recommendations to the board or advise the board.
Advice.
Yeah.
Advice.
Yeah. To advise the board on its future, you know, needs for us to make a decision on. Have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion? Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Brown and Mr. Meadows for bringing this to my attention. I mean, I was one of the people who raised concerns about this last time, just because I wanted to see it in writing, but it makes a lot more sense now that I have it in front of me, so thank you.
Absolutely. It's always a good thing for us to do.
Clerk, have a motion and a second. Would clerk please call the row?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject C, Resolution of Appreciation, Fire and Rescue Commission Chief Jimmy Effery. Wish the chief was here so I could present it tonight, but.
We'll get, we'll get it. If he approves it, we'll get it prettyed up and get him back in here.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Or a second?
Have a motion and a second. Would clerk please call the row?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Subject D, Proclamation National Emergency Medical Services Week, and that's the week of May 18 through the 24th. But I could go down and read a little bit of this, and it starts as, "Whereas Montgomery County recognizes and honors the 200-plus volunteers of the Blacksburg-Christiansburg Long Shop, McCoy, Rhona, Shawsville, and Virginia Tech Rescue Squads answering 4,650 calls collectively in the year 2013, whereas each member participated in local training exercises and drills throughout the year, devoting 22,942 hours to training to perfect their skills and maintain their certifications." And I'll stop right there, but the time that they put in is nothing to sneeze about. It's everything that we can do to commend them and thank them for the many contributions they give to this county. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would clerk please call the row?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Well, now it's time for the county attorney's report.
No report, Mr. Chair.
County administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two items. Just to remind folks, we do have a public hearing on the Prices Fork Historic District Expansion this Wednesday at 5:00. I do plan to attend, and I know that, I believe, the board chair is planning to attend as well because this affects an area in his district related to the former Prices Fork School. This is another step in the process of getting that project moving forward, and we certainly support the efforts to see that be done. Also, I do plan to attend the VDOT six-year public hearing next Monday night over in Roanoke, to make sure that the Commonwealth Transportation Board is aware, I'm sure they are, but I'm going to make sure they're aware that we still want to see them fully support the efforts to relocate the parking lot in Montgomery County. So I'll be over there to address that issue, and that's all I have.
Okay, Supervisor Biggs.
I just want to briefly report on the VACO Board meeting that was held on Saturday, May 3rd, and there was some information I thought you might be interested in. One of the things, this good news, is we're going to have a decrease in dues. VACO evidently has made some good investments, and so our dues will go down one penny per capita from 22 to 21 cents, and they wanted to sort of share that with all the counties because we came forward when VACO needed help, and now they're in a good situation, so they want to give back. I thought that was great news. They talked a lot about the state budget that hasn't come down yet, and Mr. Lynch said if it did come down, there were some real positive things in the state budget that would help localities, including an increase in the 599 funding and increase in jail per DMs and funding for health insurance for school employees, some money there. There seemed to be some question about funding coming down for constitutional officers because the way I think it is, maybe on the Senate side, I'm not positive, if you were giving raises to your constitutional officers because they were part of your county employees, you'd still have to give the additional raise that would come from the state, and then you're going to have a discrepancy between county and constitutional officers again, so I'm not sure how that will all play out. Something came up, I have a question. We don't receive any federal funding for the Jefferson National Forest being in Montgomery County, do we?
Not to my knowledge. Carol Watt? I don't think so. I know there used to be.
Right, because this was, this came up at the meeting because evidently some localities were receiving some federal funding for, so I just wrote down a question to ask to see if we did, or are we supposed to?
Well, no, if we were supposed to, we would, but I need to find out for sure.
Okay.
If we are.
All right. Let me see. Some other things. There is great concern about this, I guess it's a state-appointed board that has to do with coming up with requirements for EMS rescue people, and there's a concern that with cost and liability issues, that in the next five to 10 years, there might be a drop off of volunteers because of the requirements, so they felt it was very important that, you know, we put a VACO board, a VACO person on that committee, and there is a place for a VACO person. I was unaware that there was anything sort of going on there, but I knew that that would be a concern for us because we have so many volunteers, so I think it's good that we have representation, because the VACO board, I know the people that come together there are very supportive of volunteers for rescue and fire. Phyllis and Reiko, who is the legal person for VACO, said that there is a freedom of information, I guess, study that's going to be going on, and maybe Marty knows about this, but there's some kind of movement to exempt all closed meetings from happening. Evidently, it's going to be in a study format, something that's studied, and so she'll be involved in going to those meetings.
I have heard, I know they're always looking at the FOIA.
And then the other thing was public procurement, like having the public-private partnerships. There seems to be a movement maybe from some state contractors that are looking at trying to limit a locality's authority in that area, so she's going to be agreeing to that, too?
Yeah, I do know that there's, they're going to relook at the Public Procurement Act, I think as a whole, so that may be one of the issues, but I know the Local Government Attorneys Association, they're involved, they're heavily involved in that. I have not heard about the FOIA one.
Okay.
I guess ask Carol about the whole federal funding and the forest, and she has a little bit of information.
Well, what I remember is there, and I assume that they still get it, there was always a form that came and asked you if you had the forest within your jurisdiction, and then there was some money that went to schools. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money. It was a small amount, but I don't know if they still have it or not.
Beating check.
Yeah, I can find out. We get it and send you.
And probably when the arsenal was federal, that was a big deal back then, maybe, that if it was on, I don't know if the arsenal ever had anything like that or not.
I don't know, I don't remember the details about it, just that you had to complete this form each year, and the monies went to schools, but I mean, we're not talking.
Like a lot?
No.
Okay. But every penny counts.
I'll see what I can find out, maybe you want to know.
Okay. And then the other, let me see. Oh, you know how, oh, there might be, they might be also looking at the Conflict of Interest Act, and maybe also on the reporting on the forms that we do, going from the 10,000 limit to the 5,000 limit, and there was some discussion about, since members on board of supervisors serve on so many other commissions and boards that require you fill out that financial report, that maybe one of the things that could be suggested to the committee that's looking into that would be that you just file it one time and it's available to everyone. So that, I just thought you all might be interested in knowing some of that, and I'll tell you something, it was very sort of interesting. We held, we held this meeting in Dinwiddie County, and their tax rate, I believe, what did they say it was? 69 cents? I think it was 69. Anyway, or is it 79? I can't remember, because Rockingham was one or the other. But anyway, they only have two big things, well, they have the Walmart, the Walmart Dispersion Center, but they built, they have a sports complex, and this place brings in big-time bucks. Then they have this other thing that's like where they have these big trucks that race down the track, and it's like a motor, it's a motor complex, and it was county, it's like a county thing, and we went there and we toured, and they had all kinds of races where they had these people, they'd come in from all over, and they run over this course that's sort of like hilly and flat, and they slide down into big mud holes, and it's called a maniac something or other.
That's right.
This thing was Pac-Man. You had, they were waiting lines, the state police were there to get people in and out, number one. Number two, they charged $10 a car for parking, and it's this big flatland, I guess that the county bought, and they're going to add to it, and they're going to build this thing up. I couldn't believe it, but that's really their only source of revenue are these sort of two things, and the Walmart Dispusion Center, but boy, they're making a lot of what they have. And so we sort of toured those facilities, and it was sort of interesting to see what this one county had done.
Yeah, that complex is beautiful. It's right on 460.
Yes.
You're at East toward Prince, toward Petersburg.
Pretty close to 95. Or is that 85?
Yeah, I mean, if you ever get a chance, it was, it was very interesting. And then the other thing, we went on a tour of Pamplin Park. It's a private Civil War, if you guys have been there, museum-type thing, and very well-done, very, I just couldn't believe all the things they had there, especially if you have kids and you want to go, and the museum is just fantastic. It's all privately funded by the same Pamplin family that has Pamplin Hall at Virginia Tech. So that was sort of neat to see, but they were very good hosts, Dinwiddie County. So that's sort of my report from the VACO Board.
Supervisor Tuck.
Couple of things. One, I was glad to see us make the progress in regards to Virginia Tech going place for the students. I think that's a good thing and a good step forward. I think both sides came and made some compromises to try to do things forward. I'm interested in hearing from the public of any concerns that they might have, but I think it's a tremendous step forward. That being said, and y'all, I sent out the email on regards to University Club, which DeHart offered, and at this point in time, it doesn't look like that's going to be necessary and that's going to be moved, but I was wondering if we could get the county administrator just to simply send them a note saying thank you for the consideration, while we keep this in mind, we're hopeful that we'll be able to use choir. Other than that, that's the only aspect of my report this evening.
Okay. Supervisor Gabriel.
Yeah, I really don't have any report. The Economic Development Commission didn't have a meeting this past month, something else was conflicting, and so we're going to meet, going to meet again this month, and I believe we're, the Tourism Council's meeting again this month, so we'll have more next time, so.
Supervisor King.
No report.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Creed?
I want to piggyback a little bit here on what Biggs had to say there, had to do with the quad fields paying off. That's kind of what I've been saying that we need here for some time, especially with the idea that even to start, we can probably piggyback, piggyback pretty heavily off of Salem, who is, as everybody knows, on the capital, at least the capital of Virginia, and maybe a lot further, but we have an opportunity to do that, if we decide we want to. The elementary school down Shawville, we've got three fields on it right now. I'm in negotiations with someone from down there that we may get two or three acres of land to go with that to make it be enough to do what we need to do. Haven't got that assured yet, but we're definitely talking about it. I should know something within a week or so, you know, if we can get that donated to us. So, just something that I think the board needs to be aware of is, I think it's a moneymaker. I think it's a, helps us for drawing people from out of town in every direction, if we must ever get a hotel or motel over there at Aronto, that would even be more draw, so it'd be the closest one to work any of the ball. So anyhow, that's just something we need to keep in mind, that's all I have.
Supervisor Perkins.
Okay, I just want to say a couple of things about the MPO. Somewhere in there, in the meeting, I heard that the Commonwealth Transportation Board is taking $16 million away from the South Gate Extension Project for Tech and the airport. And so I talked to some of the members afterwards, and what they said is that, yeah, they're going to take it away, but hopefully they will put it back, but it will.
Goes through a different process.
It goes through a different channel, different process, so when you, if you hear or see that $16 million is gone, you'll understand that eventually it has to be put back in by Commonwealth Transportation Board, but William Frehlin was there, and he comes to the MPO meetings, and so he was, you know, discussing this with us. The second thing is, I'm going to just send you a copy of the agenda and the minutes. Of course, you can read it at your leisure, but I think you might be interested in some of the things, because you'll see here where they decided that there could be no more citizen representatives on the MPO Board of Directors, that it had to be elected officials. And so I'm very grateful that Todd and Mary and, who else? Matt?
I'm grateful.
You.
You get your whole board going down there.
The backup.
So I'm grateful that you think I need three backups, so that's good.
That's right.
And then I just wanted to share this with you. Corridor studies, area studies, and safety planning. Now, just, you know, you'll want to read this, too. The following corridors and areas were suggested by local governments and other stakeholders in the FY 215 Work Program Development Process. corridor simulation software, intersection evaluation, operation evaluation, transit, bicycle, pedestrian connections, parking availability, accessibility issues. Number one under there is Elliston Intermodal Facility Phase Two. Use the data and analysis from the FY 2014 Elliston Intermodal Facility Study to inform the ongoing work of this MPO for the Roanoke Valley, of which we are a part. Partnering organizations and to support general stakeholder involvement. Conduct additional analysis if needed, such as the review of potential operating models for the facility. I want you to know that it is still called the Elliston Intermodal Facility. So I've been saying that all along, and that's what they're looking at. I also found out that on this coming Wednesday, there is, and I think I know what it is, but I can't be sure, there is a meeting in Roanoke. Do you, I don't know if you know about this, and it is to discuss the feasibility. It's a part of the Phase Two ongoing work of what the intermodal facility is all about.
It's called the Intermodal Market Scenarios Meeting.
Yes, that's right. And it's at noon. You're welcome to go. I don't know if I'm go unless I talk Bobby into it, but nevertheless...
Brian Hamilton's going.
I'm sure he's going.
Brian's going.
And I think...
Does he know what side we're on?
What?
Uh, yes.
Does he know what?
Does he know what side most of us are on? I like...
Yes, I think he has no problem.
We'll leave you out. I said wait.
He's still, we're attending to gather information.
Right.
To see where they think things are going.
Right. And so I would hope that maybe some of us, other than Brian, would go, but I'm really very much considering having a babysitter and going myself because I want to hear what they've done. I missed the first meeting, but this one, I'd like to see how far they've gotten. And maybe if Brian hears more than I do, then he can explain it to me. But at any rate, that is something I wanted to bring to your attention, that...
Where is it? Where are they going to have it, at 12 o'clock this Wednesday?
Okay, it's going to be, now this is hard to find, but it's on Luck Avenue where the regular, I don't know where the regular commission meets and MPO meets. If anybody knows what, the way I get there, it's very simple. All you do is you go down 581, you turn on Elm Avenue, you go straight across Elm Avenue till you get to Franklin, because you've got to go uphill and kind of downhill. And you see the big Baptist church, the First Baptist Church in Roanoke, it's right there. So you turn to the right onto that street. Then, when you get to the stoplight, you kind of, they, oh, you sort of veer off to the left, and then you'll call it Luck Avenue.
And Channel 10's offices are sort of catty-cornered beside the building. If you know where Channel 10 is in downtown Roanoke, sort of catty-cornered.
It's a tiny place. I mean, you know, I wasn't sure I was really in the right place the first time I ever went. I parked in Channel 10 lot until I saw the numbers on the ground, and then there was a little sign over there that said restricted, we'll tow you away, so I moved. But that's where it is. It's at, what is it, 315 Luck Avenue?
Three...
Three-something Luck Avenue.
313 Luck Avenue.
Yeah, 313 Luck Avenue. So go. I think you should. Or if you have time, when you don't have a job, or you're not in court, or some of those things. But anyway, that's all.